If your family's hot and miserable, just add an AC tune-up for only $109 from Premier Heating and Air, and you'll be cool and happy. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
The September 7th, 2023 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. I'd ask for Reverend Turner to provide the invocation this evening, and after the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge to the flag. Reverend Turner?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this state that you've given us, and we're certainly mindful, God, that you've given us the ability to do what we do and gather this today, God. And Father, we ask for your grace and your mercy. We ask for the peace of God that passes all understanding in this place today, God. May your harmony and love rest in this place, so Father God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dublin City Council meeting for September 7th, 2023. We're going to begin with approval of the August 17th City Council meeting minutes. We have had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two of the agenda, which is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
The council has a copy of all expenditures from the city since our last meeting in your packets.
Any questions for staff regarding the expenditures? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion from Mascaro and a second from Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three on the agenda, which is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
We have one purchase for tonight for the meter readers in our water department. It's a 150-gallon trailer-mounted VAC that will be used by the meter readers to clean out meters when they go to work on them, service them, or replace them. We budgeted $43,450 for this, and we asked that you purchase from Vermeer Southeast Sales and Service out of Marietta for $40,975, and that was the only bid we got.
All right, we had discussion regarding this purchase item at pre-council. Are there any additional questions for staff at this time? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is discussion and action to authorize a new polling place. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2339, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to add a municipal election polling place at First Baptist Church Family Life Center specifically for the City of Dublin and Dublin City School Board, general municipal and special elections to be held on November 7th, 2023, to provide an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And we've kind of discussed this at previous meetings, but this upcoming city election, typically all city voters vote at Stubbs Park Gym or Calhoun Park Gym, and because the county is also running a simultaneous special election for the upcoming SPOLOST, the renewal of SPOLOST, city voters who vote in county elections are split into two polling locations. We had this happen back in 2019, and we kept our single location for that election, and it led to a lot of confusion. Some voters had to go to multiple polling locations in order to participate in both elections. So to avoid that, for just this one city election, we'll be adding the Family Life Center at the First Baptist Church in Dublin as an additional polling location. So city voters will be split between First Baptist Church and Calhoun Park or Stubbs Park Gym, just as you normally are for county-wide elections, county and statewide elections.
All right. At this time, if anybody has their phone, their phones need to be placed on vibrate or turned off at this time. Please take this moment to place your phones on vibrate or to turn them off. All right, thank you for that. You've heard Mr. Powell's discussion regarding the authorization of new polling place. Are there any questions for staff?
I do have one. It says that at this point, the Register has not completed the process of reassigning voter from the redistricting. What we're talking about, some people don't know that they have been rechanged to certain to the...
The process has been completed.
It has been?
The process has been nailed out.
Okay.
As of today, it still hasn't completed. So if there's a question, they can call Register's office or they can call myself, and I'll be happy to get them.
Okay, so that has been taken care of.
And if you were involved in redistricting, you will get a new precinct card.
Yeah, okay.
So you're speaking only to those that were moved maybe from Ward 4 to Ward 2, or Ward 1 to Ward 2, or something like that?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, any other questions for staff regarding this issue?
Will we, also, will we, how can I, for the wards that have to go to the First Baptist Family Life, would they receive something in the mail letting them know that for this election only they need to go there, or how would that be?
They will not. It will be in the newspaper. It's already been in the newspaper twice, that was the qualification. You kind of do.
All right, wait, wait.
Don't think they can hear you.
We're not going to have comments from the audience until citizens' comments time. This is an opportunity for a council, this is the council meeting.
Okay. It has been in the newspaper twice, although it will be placed at early voting at both polling locations. It will be on our social media, on our Facebook page, on our website, so it will be out there for the voters to see if they have questions. Also, if they come to Calhoun Park, just out of habit, we'll be able to tell them that they need to go to Family Life Center if they vote there.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time?
That's it.
Are we able to put it on the radio?
Sure, certainly.
Mainly that affects one ward though, right? I'm just out of curiosity, that's just one ward that no one else folks?
It will actually affect two different wards because of the redistricting, but those wards will have their precinct.
Okay. Got you, okay.
Any other questions? All right, I know that we've been talking about this for several months, and I appreciate all the work that you've done to get this ready, to make it easier for people to vote. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones. We have a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to approve agreements with Georgia Power and AT&amp;T. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2341, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council approving contracts with Georgia Power Company and Bell South Telecommunications LLC doing business as AT&amp;T Southeast for the conversion of utilities from overhead to underground along a portion of Madison Street for the City of Dublin to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. You may recall, we received a downtown redevelopment grant last year, notice of award of that, and part of this is going to be for a streetscape project on Madison Street, from Church Street to Jefferson Street here in town. A major part of the project that we've been waiting on from Georgia Power and AT&amp;T is the relocation of their utilities, so we don't have all those power lines and cables running above ground. They'll be relocating those to underground, and we've been waiting on the cost of that in order to know what we have left from the grant to use for the streetscape portion of the project. The total of the contract with Georgia Power is $1,624,196.53, and AT&amp;T is $62,323.09. And if you're wondering why there's a big discrepancy there, it's because AT&amp;T already has a lot of lines running underground through Madison anyway.
All right, do we have any questions for staff regarding this issue? Again, this is one that has been on the table for a long time now. This is getting it to the point of actually approving the agreements for the work to begin. My understanding, based on our pre-council discussion, was that once these agreements are signed, Georgia Power and AT&amp;T will be able to provide the city and the businesses located on Madison Street with more specific information about when the work will start and how that may affect the streets and sidewalks on Madison Street.
Yeah, and it is being paid for with grant funds, and this grant was just specific for downtowns.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions for staff at this time? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
My name is Jeremy Blackstock. I'm the head of school at Trinity Christian School. For over 50 years, our school has faithfully served the Dublin and Lawrence County community. If you are interested in learning more about Trinity Christian, visit our website or also stop by campus. We'd love to show you around. We'd love for your family to be a part of what we're doing here at Trinity Christian School as we endeavor to teach the truth every day. The Lord has blessed us, and we have experienced growth this year in our enrollment, but there are still plenty of spots available in K through 12th grade. So if you're interested in touring the school or interested in learning more about our application process, visit our website, tcsweb.org, or call us here at the school and speak with Dawn Lane, our admissions director.
Now's the time to get a great deal on the number-one rated tractor brand for durability and owner experience, professional-grade mowers, durable sidekick utility vehicles, and versatile compact tractors. It's the equipment you need to take care of your land. Right now, bring home select Kubota equipment for zero down, 0% APR for up to 60 months, plus save up to $800. Your Kubota dealer is Midstate Tractor and Equipment, 1325 North Jefferson, Dublin.
Imagine a life-changing injury. Imagine the fear and unknown. The Houston Clinic Sports Medicine Team, the only physicians in the area with advanced certification in orthopedic sports medicine, treats sports injuries with innovative techniques. The Houston Clinic has helped nearly a million athletes live without pain. Imagine getting back in the game. Imagine the best game of your life. The Houston Clinic Sports Medicine Team.
We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution for renovation of the Oconee Gym. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2342, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to approve the engagement of C.E. Garbutt Construction Company for the repair and renovation of the City of, well, let's just say, Oconee Gym, to provide authority for approvals and expenditures for the project to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right, we've had extensive discussion regarding this action item on tonight's agenda at pre-council meeting. At this point, to begin council discussion, we'll need a motion. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to reject all bids and rebid this item out.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to reject all bids and to rebid the project. Any discussion on this motion? All right, if there is no discussion in the motion, this is a resolution, so it does not require a roll call vote, but we will, just in, so that we can make sure that we have the right signifier of votes, ask all those who are in favor of the motion to reject all bids and to rebid to please raise their hand. That's three votes in favor of rejecting all bids.
Now, when you say reject all bids, is that the same as postponing?
No, you have to reject.
No.
That would, that would be a rejection, that would be a rejection of the bids that...
So we can't postpone it and have another discussion?
That's not the motion.
Right. Yeah, and our city attorney, Mr. Groover, can provide information. My understanding is that we can accept a bid, we can reject all bids, or we can postpone. What we have on the floor is a motion to reject, not a motion to postpone. Now, if the motion to reject fails, we could have a motion to approve or a motion to postpone, but at the moment, what is on the floor is a motion to reject all bids. Now that we've had that clarification, I will ask again for all those who are in favor of the motion to reject all bids to raise their hand. That's two votes in favor of rejecting all. All those opposed to rejecting all bids, please raise your hand. It's one, two, three, four. Okay, so by a vote of two to four...
Five.
Two to five, thank you. By a vote of two to five, the motion to reject all bids fails. The floor is now open for another motion.
Motion to postpone all bids.
We have a motion to postpone all bids. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second, so we have a motion from Councilman Jones. We have a second from Councilman Godfrey. Do we have discussion on the motion to postpone, postpone action on this item? Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Now, my understa, Mr. Groover, if you can tell us, there's two ways to postpone. One is to a particular date, and another is just to table it. If we postpone it to a particular date, it's automatically on the agenda for that date. If we table it, then it has to be a motion to bring it off the table. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
But I'm not sure we have, like now, is it a motion to postpone the decision?
Right.
The specification, so it's taken the table.
So we can, and maybe, the motion was made by Councilman Godfrey, is that correct?
Jones.
By Councilman Jones. Were you wanting to make this to postpone it to the next meeting date or to postpone it indefinitely?
What you're saying is that in order to bring it back off of postponement, I had to bring another motion up to take it off to, to, to...
That's right.
To any date, so I could...
Or in this motion, if you want it to come up automatically at another meeting, you just say, I want it to come up.
Could I, could I redo my...
Clarify, yes, clarify my question.
I make a motion to postpone this bid till we talk, have a talk with the community about this, and hopefully that be done by...
The next council meeting?
When's our next council meeting date?
Next council meeting?
21st.
The next council meeting is September 21st, so if you wanted to make your motion...
Would that give us staff time to do that, or do we need to do it for October the 5th? I'm trying to get staff time to, I want to make sure we have time to go, to advertise, get out in the community, and have a community meeting, postpone it till we talk to them, and then we bring it back for, so October 5th, would that give you?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I wanted to do it before that because I know that Tara says she had to turn in some information.
She said she could get that.
24th, right?
Mayor, could you elaborate what postponement could do potentially for the, if we know for this, for receipt of the grant?
Okay, well, first, let's get the motion. Let's make sure we've got the proper motion on the floor, and then we'll do that. So Mr. Jones is a person who has the floor to make the motion, and my understanding is that the motion is to postpone, and it's going to need to be either the 21st or October the 5th. So you need to state which date you want it postponed to.
21st with the, having a meeting between, with the community.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to postpone decision until our next meeting on September the 21st. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
It has a second. The second is from Councilman Godfrey. Now that we have a motion and a second, we can have discussion on the motion. Mr. Brown, I understand that you have a question regarding how a postponement may affect the grant that we've received from the state. For that, I'd ask us, Ms., or Mr. Powell, if you can elaborate, or Ms. Bradshaw.
Yeah, it's my understanding we are supposed to submit a budget for the grant, which, as Tara elaborated in the pre-council meeting, would be beneficial to have the contractor in place to be able to put that together for us, because we don't, until we start talking with them directly about that, we don't know what that budget would look like particularly. But...
When is that budget due?
That is supposed to be done by the 20th, September 20th.
September 20th.
Well, she says she possibly could get us an extension, right?
She doesn't know that.
She doesn't know that.
She can, she can ask for that.
Okay.
No, I don't know. I can't guarantee it. I'll ask, absolutely.
Okay, so I think everybody needs to be aware that this is a...
Will this cause us to lose the grant?
I doubt it. I can't imagine them rejecting it at this early stage, but...
Okay.
All right, so the facts that we know are that a budget is due on September 20th. The things that we could speculate on is that it would not likely cause us to lose the grant, but no guarantee can be made on that. All right, Mr. Brown?
Do a call meeting? That's what I was about, what I was about to ask. So let's say we follow through with where things are right now, with the, with the motion. We've got to submit the budget by the 20th. Ms. Bradshaw has a conversation with the group that facilitates this. She comes back and we get definite pushback. The last thing I think that I want to have happen, and I think that the community wants to have happen, is that we don't have access to $2.2 million in funds to renovate Oconee Gym. Is there time for us to have a call meeting?
So my understanding is that a special meeting can be called by the mayor to, for any particular issue that comes up, and as long as we have a quorum, we can set an agenda for that, and...
Are you saying my motion?
Excuse me?
Are you saying my motion?
Well, let me, let me just finish this. I think that what we could do, and this is all based on the idea of, I'm not saying what council is going to do, but if the motion were to pass, we could request that Ms. Bradshaw contact the state and have them tell us whether they would give us an extension or not. If they would not give us an extension, then I would call a special meeting so that we would not lose the grant funds. If they would give us an extension, then it would be on the agenda for the September 21st meeting. Mr. Groover, is that your understanding of how we could legally do that?
Yeah, you can set an agenda to call me, and give the information, and then we could do a motion to rescind the motion to postpone to a definite time, and then take up the decision before that, in that meeting. So much of Robert rules to say yes.
Right.
So could I need to make my motion to make that, to make the, okay, keep it like it is, and we good? Okay.
All right, so we, now it's time for further comments regarding the motion. Mr. Mascara?
If we postpone, and what is the, what will be the result of the postponement? What is, what is the goal of the postponement?
I think that's a question for Mr. Jones. You're the one making the motion. Do you want to explain the purpose of the motion?
We've talked about getting community input on everything. I think the community need to be heard about this and give their opinion about this, and the council need to listen. They actually gave their, they gave their input last time, but, but listen to the, my main is listen to what the community's saying, and let's see if we can, they're not here for, they're here for a reason, and you're going to hear the citizen comment. That's all I'm saying, so...
Which, that leads to my next question. So if we postpone it based on what contractor we use, where will that leave us if they don't want to use Garbutt Construction to do it? Will we have to reopen this process?
Yes, just start over.
And how long will that take?
Well, based on comments, I don't know if we want to advertise it for longer than 60, 30 days, but we, it would have to be advertised at least 30 days.
And will that, will that timeframe put us in jeopardy of possibly losing the grant?
The critical timelines that I'm aware of with the grant are that the funds have to be allocated by October of 2026 and spent by December of 2026. It's ARPA money.
Yeah, and those, those are the...
Yeah, and then there's reporting requirements in between, but...
And just to, this is just following up on what Mr. Powell said. The state received its funds that passed through to the city from the federal government, which is why the ARPA regulations on how it's spent apply to these funds, which is why we have to go through a bidding process or a procurement process, and why we have to meet the timeline of spending the ARPA funds. Now, my understanding is the state has additional requirements on top of the ARPA requirements, and those are the reporting deadlines, the first reporting deadline being the September 30th deadline, but those, the September 20th, but the state may be able to give flexibility on those reporting deadlines because they're not federally mandated. Is that all correct? Okay, all right. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, and basically, it could put us in jeopardy of state reporting deadlines but not federal ARPA deadlines.
This one is through the governor's office of planning and budget, correct? So we've not, we've been dealing with most of our other grants through DCA, so we know we've got good contacts with them, but I, it's just a different office we're dealing with, and asking for these deadline extensions, so I don't know.
Now, and the reason that we're all having this very detailed conversation about dates is, I think what Mr. Brown says, nobody wants to lose the $2.2 million. So...
So from that standpoint, when, I mean, this is urgent if we, if we decide to move in that direction. How quickly can Ms. Bradshaw contact, I guess, the...
The governor's office.
The governor's office.
Why are we rushing? I mean, she doubt we'll lose the grant. Pretty much we...
We need to, we need to know whether we're going to lose the grant or not, though.
We got to year 2026. Why are we rushing this process? Is it pertaining to Oconee? We want to rush it? No, just take our time, make the right decision.
Here, can I ask one more question? Because I think it's pertinent. If we, if we have gone through the RFP process and selected a con, and our board came back and said, these, this is the contractor that we choose, and we voted down against that contractor, does that open us up to any liability with that contractor?
No.
RFP said we do not accept it.
Well, that's a legal question, Mr. Groover. Do you have a response to that?
What are you talking about?
So if we, if we go through the process and we, and we've already gone through the RFP process, it was listed, we did everything in regulation that we're supposed to do, and we decide not to use Garbutt, and then we, can Garbutt come back, and is there any liability exposure for the city?
That's because we reject the bid.
Go through this process, bring it up, and then reject Garbutt?
Yeah, if we, if we, if we come through this process, we have the city meeting, and then we decide that we're not going to use Garbutt as the contractor.
We do have a right to reject bids. I mean...
You can reject all, you can reject bids.
I'm just doing this for clarity, so everybody understands.
You can reject all bids at any time.
At any time.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Groover, and just again on the deadlines, and I want to make sure we're clear about this. The federal, the federal deadlines are not for a long time, but they're not flexible at all. The state deadlines are, there are multiple state deadlines every, so, every however many months, but those may be flexible. That's, that's what Ms. Bradshaw has to find out.
That's the question that I'm asking.
Yeah, could I ask a question about that? So the 2026 date is the date that the money has to be spent and the project has to be completed. Is that correct?
October 31st, 2026. If you were to award this, whatever contractor, whoever you choose right now, you're looking at the project not being completed until summer 2025. So you do have a little leeway in there, but the problem is, is we have, now that we have executed the terms and conditions with OPB, we have milestones we have to hit based on that, so...
The OPB...
And you mean because we approved the grant? We accepted the money with the terms of the money being given to us? Yes.
Terms and conditions in July, and so we're on their time block now.
Got it.
But I will, I will contact them and get your answer.
All right, so we still have the motion pending. Are there any other comments or questions? And we, this is an opportunity for questions for staff or for Mr. Groover, our city attorney, or any comments that anybody wants to make regarding this.
I want to make a comment. So you all remember just a couple of weeks ago, the whole city was up in arms about our rebranding, and we decided to postpone that. So what's the problem with us postponing this? I'm trying to get clarity, understanding, calm down confusion, and y'all want to make a big deal about postponing. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's the same exact thing.
I think that the questions we're talking about on postponing are really related to making sure that a postponement doesn't, all right, can you please step out? Please, whoever had the phone that went off, please step out.
Just to calm the situation.
You're right, so I think that the, the reason that we're asking all these questions about the postponement, make sure that it doesn't jeopardize the $2.2 million.
Well, I get that part.
Yeah, okay.
That's my, that's my line of questioning.
I understand that, and I understand what Tara said, but I'm just saying, it's a reason for my postponing, is to get understanding, like we're getting understanding with the rebranding.
Right.
Same thing, just different people, different colors, and all of this stuff. And I'm over it, just-
All right.
-calm the storm is what I'm trying to do.
Do we have any other comments from council members? Any other comments from council members? Any other questions? All right, now that we've had, all council members have had an opportunity-
Restate the motion.
Yes. Now that we've had an opportunity for all council members to make comments and ask questions, I'll restate the motion and then call for a vote on it. The motion is to postpone the decision regarding the award of the contract to the September 21st, 2023 city council meeting, with the understanding that if the state does not allow us to extend the reporting deadline, which is September 20th, that I will call a special meeting so that we can move forward to not jeopardize the 2.2 million.
I agree.
So that is, is that an accurate statement of your motion, Mr. Jones?
But in between that, we're holding a meeting with the community.
Well-
I did put that into motion.
Yes, and the question is, can that be a motion related to this resolution?
Well, staff just needs to know exactly how you want to, if we just want to have something here at City Hall, we can do that, or-
City Hall, Oak County Gym.
So what we'll have to do is just say that the, we'll note that the purpose of the motion is to allow for citizens' comments, and then how that happens will be up to a discussion among council members and staff after the meeting. All right, so we have the motion, we have a second. We've had an opportunity for comments and questions. We'll now take the vote. All those in favor of the motion for postponement, please raise your hand. All right, we have three votes in favor of postponement. All those opposed to postponement, please raise your hand.
Wait, in favor?
I mean, I'm sorry, opposed to postponement, please raise your hand.
Restate the motion again.
All right. All those, all right, we'll, just to make sure that we understand it all, we have a motion on the floor. The motion is to postpone to the September 21st city council meeting, the decision on this item, with the understanding that we will not do anything to jeopardize the 2.2 million. All those in favor of the motion to postpone to the September 21st city council meeting, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. So this is, all those in favor of postponing is six votes in favor of postponing. All those opposed to postponing, one. All right, so the motion to postpone carries six to one. This item of our agenda will be placed on the September 21st, 2023 city council meeting for action. If, in the meantime, staff will work with council members to establish a, a time and a place for community input, and if we receive word that the 21st is too late or jeopardizes the $2.2 million grant, I will call a special meeting so that we can take action to make sure that the, the grant is received by the city.
I'm Glenn Registered, Hometown Supply. Come by today and let me show you all the different product lines that we carry. Just about anything that you need, we have it in stock. We do financing, we deliver just about anything a customer needs for us to do, we do. Come by and let me show you what sets us apart from all the rest. If you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs, and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future. That's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter. Member FDIC.
How to outsmart the outdoors. Think fast. That needs work. That needs trimming. That needs cleanup. But all that work takes a lot of tools. Lucky for you, that tool, that tool, that one, they're all the same tool. That's smart, super smart. That's the Echo Pro Attachment Series. Gas-powered, battery-powered, 16 attachments for hedging, edging, trimming, tilling, cutting, blowing, paddling, yeah, that too. It's outdoor-grade, professional-grade, commercial-grade, which is great for making your yard look like it belongs in a commercial. Echo, power on and on.
Hey, I'm TJ with Dublin Outdoors and Powersports, formerly known as Marge Equipment Supply. We're your full-line sales and service dealer for Echo and Shindow handheld products.
All right, we'll now move to the next item on our agenda, which is item number seven, an agreement with Flock Group, Inc. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2343, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council approving the contract with Flock Group Incorporated for a five-year service and equipment agreement for the city of Dublin to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same set and effective date and for other lawful purposes. This contract is with Flock Group. We have our cameras throughout town. This is for 21 of the cameras that we have. We currently have 30. But it, we've been notified, our chief police have been notified of a potential price increase with them, and to lock in our current price, we've asked that you approve this contract. It's $53,500 a year.
All right, do we have any questions for staff regarding this item? I know that we've talked about flock cameras in the past. This is an opportunity to lock in a lower price.
How long, how long the price is locked in for? He says yearly. How long we lock this in for?
Well, all contracts with the city have to terminate absolutely every year and renew, automatically renew, but these prices are good for each five years.
Every five years?
Five years. All right, thank you for that question. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We didn't have a motion.
We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby. We have a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is citizens' comments. As in the past, citizens' comments are, this is an opportunity to address counsel with your comments on things that are relevant to the city of Dublin. There's three minutes for each citizen to provide comments. Comments should not be personal in nature and not directed to any personnel. Our clerk, Ms. Heather Browning, will indicate when your time is down to a minute, and then again, when your time is up. If there's anyone who would like to make citizens' comments, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you, and you can come forward. Yes, Ms. Morton?
I'm Von DeMorton, proud eighth-generation native of the southern state of Georgia. I've tried haranguing, history lessons, hermeneutics, humor, and a variety of other approaches over the past four months. Y'all are a stiff-necked lot, and that's not a compliment. Check your Bible commentaries on stiff-necked people. I know y'all most likely think I'm an eccentric old fool, but here's the thing, I don't live with any of y'all. I have to look at myself in the morning, in the mirror, and I long ago quit caring what anybody else thinks about me. I'll continue to stand for what I believe in, even if it means standing alone. So going forward, I'll simply use my allotted time to do what y'all refuse to do, since it's obvious y'all have nothing but contempt for the principles our sovereign state stands I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands: wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Morton. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? Please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. First off, I love Dublin. This is my home. I'm happy to serve my-
State name and address.
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I forgot to say, and this is on me, I forgot to say that each person who begins with their citizens' comments needs to state their name and address, just so that Ms. Browning can have that for our record.
I'm Marilyn Stoff. My address is 513 Tucker Street.
Thank you.
I love Dublin. This is my home. I'm happy to serve my community in any way I can, and good people do live here. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the sudden rise in crime. I'm glad to see all of those seats are full. I'm disappointed to see some of these are empty. I would have thought this would have been more important than rebranding. But there you go. I digress. I saw your statement, Mayor, about increasing the number of policemen we have, and also Sheriff Dean's agreement to add his deputies to the efforts of keeping the citizens of Dublin safe, and I appreciate it. I would like to urge you to make sure that one of those officers has the skills necessary to interact with concerned citizens. I live downtown, a stone's throw from City Hall. I was awakened at 1:30 in the morning to gunfire and sirens. Because there were sirens, I knew the police were busy, way too busy to be taking phone calls. I waited until Monday morning, and I called the non-emergency line. I wanted to know what occurred, not because I'm nosy, but because I live here and I have two children. I wanted to know if I needed to take extra precautions. I was simply told, we're not giving out any information at this time. That was it. I don't want to get secondhand gossip from somebody who heard something from somebody else who may or may not have had a cousin who might have seen something. I want an officer of the law to simply tell me the bare facts and whether or not the situation is resolved. For all I know, there was a jailbreak, a zombie apocalypse, or an alien invasion. Now, I understand that no matter what CNN tells you, I know that only one of those is a possibility. However, when citizens are told nothing and they're uninformed, you can guarantee rumors and false information will be spread. I have two questions. What is the full extent of the actions being taken to nip this in the bud? And number two, what can we do as citizens to help?
All right, thank you for your comments. Always appreciate the work that you do for the city. I know you're a volunteer with some of our boards as well, so look forward to having discussions with you about that. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Yes, please come forward.
Hi. I'm Deborah Howard. I live at Emery Apartments. I come through Church Street and this big old pole. I guess I could show it to you?
Sure.
And it's leaning, we have a bad storm or anything.
I don't talk to you.
I think it gonna, it gonna fall on us. It's got wires and everything.
On Church?
On Church Street, right off Church Street. And I don't know if you all know about it or heard about it.
Is that at the corner of Church and, and-
West Mary?
West Mary.
That's where we're talking about.
Further down, okay.
See how bad it is? And I want to address another situation too. My daughter couldn't be here, but over there in Dublin Housing Authority, when I go visit them, can you see the holes that is in there?
Where is that located?
And Dublin Housing Authority Community.
Which one?
All West Mary.
West Mary, okay, thank you.
And you go, yeah. And the holes are so big, it's one of them, I hit and it-
Is that inside the house? Or is that, is on the-
Hit my tire.
That's, that's on the street? Okay.
And they, Dublin Housing Authority said they are not responsible for it.
We can get, yes, on West Mary. We can get that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for bringing those concerns in. And you're also welcome to come to City Hall, and if you see issues like that, we have a 311 app with the city of Dublin where you can report it online, or you can come into City Hall and talk with somebody either in the city manager's office or the code enforcement office. But we appreciate, you can also come here and make citizens' comments, so appreciate your concern about our town.
All right, thank you.
Hello, this is Andy Cullens at Cullens Supply. You can mow with an attitude. It's our legacy, the driving force behind every mower. It's a promise to every Bad Boy Mower owner, and we offer powerful mowing performance across our entire mower lineup, and we do it all for mowing pros and demanding homeowners just like you. It takes brains and brawn to build a mower as ruggedly, simple to operate, and easy to maintain, and provide the best value as a Bad Boy Mower. Overbuilt and over horsepower, since the very beginning, our mowers represent the best in delivering classic American muscle. We continue to improve the process of building and innovating our mowers so that every single one is delivered to you, ready to mow with an attitude. Visit us at Cullens Supply and Engine Service at 910 East Jackson Street in Dublin, or 826 South Harris Street in Sandersville.
From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations: Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and Downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Who can you count on when buying or selling your home, land, or commercial property? Century 21 Durden Carnegie, the number one realty company in Dublin and Lawrence County. Count on Brian Howell, Charlene Lamb, Adam White, David Beavs, Jennifer Bradley, Mark Bateman, Jay Brantley, Jim Jarrett, Reina Dufferley, Yafon Robertson, or broker George Durden. Century 21 Durden Carnegie, 1,700 Veterans Boulevard in Dublin. Call 478-272-1535, or log on to c21dublin.com.
Yes, any other comments this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Porter, and I pastor the Washington Street Presbyterian Church. I'd like to applaud the council for the action, Jermaine, to the motion to postponement. There are many of us who are here because we care about the Oconee Gym renovation, and I would just like for those citizens to stand. So this is a recognition of community concern. So the council has taken an action that affirms the enthusiasm and the concern of the community, and I applaud you. So during the next couple of weeks, we would like to be involved in the planning process for the award of whoever will do the renovation. So we thank you for your work, and we are waiting to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, Reverend Porter. Always good to see you. Appreciate you coming this evening. Do we have any other citizens' comments? Yes, Mr. Davis?
Jerry Davis, 111 Hedge Way, Dublin, Georgia. And I would also like to commend the mayor and the council for the decision to postpone the construction project today. I do want to say that the project that we are considering, I, my, our preference would be an African-American contractor, but we, I know the process, so we would respect the process. And I just want to reflect back a long time ago, when I was in high school, and we had an assembly in the high school gym, that's the Oak County Gym. We are very passionate about the gym. And we had a meeting with the superintendent at that time, and he told us, I was the, I was in the second to the last class for Oak County High School, and he told us at the time that in a year that we were going to be integrating, and the school would not be Oak County High School, it would not be Dublin High School. The colors would not be blue and gold, the colors would not be green and white with the little gold border, and the mascot wouldn't be the Irish, and the mascot wouldn't be the Trojans. So I graduated and the other class completed their year, but when I came back to Dublin, I realized everything that was told us didn't come to fruition, because Oak County High School, the community, didn't get anything in the integration. So I'm just, the more things change, the more things remain the same. So I want us to consider an African-American contractor for some of these projects. Being in the pre-council, Councilman Jones indicated that if some of the people that are not getting the contracts, don't ever get the contracts, we will not get any experience. And that's been our problem, that's been my, that was my problem, and all of our problems. When we graduate from college, you go apply for a job, and they say, well, have you got any experience? And if nobody gives us an opportunity, we'll never get any experience. So I applaud you all today for the decision that you all made, but I hope you all would could give some consideration to some of the construction companies that are not getting these projects.
All right, thank you for those comments. Is there any other citizen that would like to make comments this evening? Yes, Mr. Smith, please come down.
Eugene, Eugene Smith, how y'all doing? When, when, when grants and different things are awarded, and, and we come and ask, why couldn't y'all get a grant like Macon got? And you say, we're not as big as Macon. We don't have the population that Macon have, so we can't get the grants that Macon get because they are bigger. That's the same thing we're dealing with with this construction company. Everyone in here, these are our representatives. We have a chance to go to the polls to make changes. We elect peoples to represent us.
Yes.
Ward one, ward four.
At large.
At large, at large. Everybody has a position. Now, if we won't change, we have to be that change. Compare Macon to Dublin, compare big contractors, I'm a small little contractor. I do great work, but we have to be granted opportunities. We can't ever get great if we don't get great work. We get $2,000 worth, we can't, some, some jobs you have to be burned at for, $400,000, $1 million. Every Joe Blow can't get that. Every Joe Blow can't get burned at for $200,000, $1 million dollars. It take growing, just like Dublin want to grow to get like Macon. We have to grow. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Any other citizens' comments? All right, thank you all for coming this evening. Now it's time for staff comments. Mr. Groover, do you have any comments? You want, no?
Yeah, one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Did you have a comment this evening? If you have a comment, please come on down.
She can't get by. Not you.
Good evening.
My name is Carla, Carles Denise Wright Johnson. I'm a little nervous, first time doing it. You know how that go, have a 16-year-old and a, a mentoring her nephew, a high of a many. And he's at, I got to pick him up. I'm on the time limit, too. I'm on a time limit too. This city, this city has been good to me, but I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for us.
The hardest part is.
I have asthma, I'm sorry.
The hardest part is standing up. The hardest part is standing up, and you're standing, so you've done the hardest part, so you got it.
You're doing good.
Okay. In God, we trust, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm speaking for my household, and I'm not on, I'm not on either side, to be honest. I'm on everybody's side. I'm on what we all, what we all stand for, right? People, we are the people, right? Of the.
United States of America?
I could, which we all saying. I have a son, he's 16, he's a junior at Dublin High School. Everybody know, well, if you're in the city, like I said, the city has been good to my household. I can't speak for nobody else's household, I can speak for my household and my life experiences. However, since we, the people of the United States of America, we, we need to, in God we trust, because I've been through, we've been through a lot. And the reason why I was late, I'm just going to be honest, I know I might go over my little three minutes on Browning and.
Closer.
Grover. Groover. But, it's been hard, extremely hard. And I'm a product of my environment, but this city that was established in 1812, the city of Dublin, with the Shamrock, you know, the, we the people, we the people of the United States of America, you know, we gonna, excuse me, we'll set it off. And when I mean that, I'm a concerned.
If you can.
Oh, time's up. No, I'm just saying that, just continue to pray for the United States of America.
Certainly agree with that.
You know, because we need it, we all need it. I mean, because we, and I understand my time is up, we all have had some things, and we've said some things, and we've done some things in the dark. I've been in, I've been low, I've been high, I've been medium, I've been overest, overest, depressed. But my thing is, we need to come together as a, you know.
As a community.
Together, as the city.
Right. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments this evening, and I agree, we need to come together as a community. So, I appreciate you standing up and saying that, and hopefully you'll have an opportunity to come and speak again.
Hi, I'm Perry Williamson, and we've been baking here at Williamson's Bakery since 1927. In 1965, my grandfather, Merle Williamson, hung our name on this bakery. Ever since then, people have been stopping in for the Williamson's tradition. We invite you to do the same here at 1634 Veterans Boulevard, or catch us on Facebook, or just come get you some.
You've dreamed about the perfect house, a place to call your own, and a place to not only stretch out, but to grow. Auto owners protect your house because to you, it's home. That's simple human sense.
Ask Curry Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
Happy to help, man. I was just hoping to talk to myself anyway.
Get $1,000 cash back and a free programmable Wi-Fi thermostat with the purchase of any new AC system from Premier Heating and Air. Payments starting as low as $89 per month. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
Is there, is there anyone else who has a citizen's comment this evening?
Watch the cord.
Got it.
Thank y'all for this opportunity. I just want, my name is Alfred Wheeler, and I live on Lassiter Drive, and I just want to say this. I want you all to think about fairness. I've been in this town for 20 years, and I've seen a whole lot. I love Dublin, but I want y'all to think about, when y'all making this decision, when y'all making decisions, I'm sure, I hope y'all are seeking God. But we are not here, you know, we are here, when I think about all the decisions that have been made in the last 20 years, you know, I think about our communities that we live in. When you look at the whole totality of this city, when y'all, when y'all thinking about, you know, when you making your decisions, are you thinking about, are we being fair for all the citizens of Dublin? And I know that some of you all have probably made your mind up, but I want you all in this time to think about and pray, fast, whatever you do, and think about the fairness, and give somebody else the opportunity. You know, I've been here, you know, you had different construction companies that you all have, you know, awarded contracts to and bids to. You know, they've been the same contractors for years, and it's important to the community that we just give somebody else an opportunity. You know, I think about my own life, and I think about, you know, different stories in the Bible of how God brought, you know, the person from the past, I mean, from the back to the front. Give somebody else opportunity. Just think about that. It's not, it's not, it's not a hard thing. Think about that. That's all I have to say. Just give, think about giving people opportunities, because remember, somebody gave us all, excuse me, somebody gave all of you opportunities, and without that person that you knew, you probably wouldn't have got the same opportunities. There's opportunities that I can get, that I've gotten because of people like you gave me an opportunity. So, that's what I, that's what I have to say. I have some questions, but I just want you all to think about that. Look at your conscience. Look at your conscience. When you go, I tell my staff each and every day, when you, when you go home, have you given this job everything that you got? You ask yourself, are you being fair to all the citizens of this community? In the decisions you making, are you being fair to everybody? Just think about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Any other citizens' comments this evening? All right. If there are no other citizens' comments, Mr. Grover? Any comments this evening?
I know, not right now.
All right. Thank you.
I want executive session.
Yeah. After we have staff comments, then we will need a motion to adjourn to executive session, but at the moment, we'll do this in public. Ms. Browning, do you have any comments this evening? All right. Mr. Powell, any comments this evening? Are there any council members who would like to make comments this evening before we go into executive session while we have the public here?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and saying this is what democracy is all about, everyone voicing their opinion. I'm glad we came out, but, and I'll continue to voice your opinion about every situation. As I said at the last meeting, there are conversations that we still need to have, tough conversations that we need to sit down and have, so everyone will feel fair. It's a difference, I think, we think we must treat everybody equal, and we think that's what it is. It's not equal, it's about fairness. Equal don't mean the same thing, it's fairness. Everybody want to be treated fair. So, I think we're getting there. This council, I must say, I must commend our staff. I want to say, our staff has done a wonderful job. I want no one to think that the conversation we had was tough, but no one was down on the staff. The staff has done a wonderful job. We thank y'all for what y'all do each and every day. I see staff out there, even during the storm, they was out there in the weather, the sanitation workers, everybody was out there doing their job. I want to thank y'all for everything that you do, but at the same time, we have decisions to make as representing the people. That's going to be tough, and we want to make sure we make them right. So, I thank everyone for coming out, voicing your opinion. This is the United States of America. I am a veteran, and I fought for you to have your, have that right to speak and say what you got to say. So, thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, oh, thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, thank you all for coming out. These are some tough times we're dealing with right now. We need to pray for the children, pray for the city. We losing too many people. We got to get back to the church, we got to get back to praying and lifting people up and taking care of our children. The children are our future, and I'm so full because I lose sleep because I care so much about people. Just the other day, I went and knocked on a door of a gentleman that I thought something was wrong, and it really was wrong. He had fallen, bumped his head, and has bleeding on his brain. But if I wouldn't been a caring person, he wouldn't make it. He had to be lifelighted to Savannah. So, I'm just saying, let's just start loving more and caring for people. And I want to say happy birthday to Tanya Thomasberry and to Mrs. Carolyn McCoon. Happy birthday on Light of Note.
All right. Thank you for that. Ms. Colby?
I got comments.
Mr. Brown?
I just want to echo what Tess has just said, you know, we've had some situations happen in the community. We need to take our community back, you know. What's occurred over the last couple of days is not, is not reflective of who we are, and I implore the community to, to let's take a stand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Griggs?
Just want to thank everybody for coming and the comments that were made, and echo what everybody else has said, and y'all have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Mr. Smith?
I agree with everything that's been said with Benny and Tess and Bill, Paul as well. I just want to thank the community for coming out and showing your support for your community. I mean, that's what we need to see. Me, myself, and Benny and Tess, and everybody on council can express it all day, but until we have the backing of our community, hey, we standing still. So, I just thank y'all guys for coming out.
All right. Mr. Mascara?
There's been a lot said. I just want our community to understand that at the heartbeat of every decision we make is the community, and we have to ask hard questions and dig to the answers to get the best results, because you're worth fighting for, and you're worth going the extra mile to get the best for your dollars and in your communities. And sometimes that process is not pretty, and sometimes it may seem like we're not listening, but I can tell you, everybody that sits up here is listening. And if we don't have you coming out, like everybody said, we're not going to, we don't know the answers unless you tell us. And please continue to challenge your city council. It's your job. We work for you. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mascara. At this time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you. And I just want to point out that the executive session is related to a litigation matter only, it has nothing to do with anything that was on the agenda this evening. It's a totally separate litigation matter that we would be adjourning to executive session for. We have a motion from Councilman Brown. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor of adjourning to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
I worked with MetLife for many years. After retiring from MetLife, Darren and I began to talk about forming an insurance agency. So, Darren and I in 1999 formed Clements and King Insurance. Probably worked harder after retiring than before.
Marcus and I decided to come together, and it has been great. Health insurance is a big area. There's a lot of facets to it. We try to be the place that you can start out young and grow old into the senior insurance that you need, and we cover every area of health insurance, then life insurance.
Many are influenced by what they see on TV or what they see online. We provide an alternative to that. We have an office, and we try to navigate, help our clients navigate the confusing market of Medicare-related products.
What I would like for our clients to know, or our potential clients to know, that when you meet with us, we don't charge a fee for our service. And if you have a plan in place, and if it's better for you, we'll tell you that that's the plan you need to stay with. We're not going to push you towards something we have.
I do the Medicare-related insurance. I tell my clients, I've been 65 for 11 years. People normally get Medicare when they're 65, and what we do is provide insurance to supplement their base Medicare.
So, I specialize in individual health insurance, or private policies, which is for people who do not have access to health insurance through their job or where they work. And I also specialize in group insurance for small businesses. Majority of small businesses are family businesses, and so, we're a family business, and we understand the struggles that they have and the opportunities that they have. So, we really enjoy working with them from one family to another.
55 years ago, when I started in the insurance business, never would I imagine that one day I'd be working with my son-in-law, and I'd have the granddaughter coming in.
When I first started, I would sit in on several of the appointments with my granddad, and I witnessed many clients come in, and they were just overwhelmed with the idea of senior insurance. And I have seen the way that my granddad, being so knowledgeable about it, and being so personal, and caring so much about the clients, he's able to just turn that around, and they leave the office just with this weight off their shoulders. I have learned, not just about insurance, but how to treat the people in our community, and how to make sure that they know that we're there for them from the beginning of the sale until just the rest of our time with them as our client.
And so, Allison is now with us. We're very excited about that. She is primarily focused on Medicare with Marcus, but she does a lot of life insurance.
So, I work with clients of all ages. I have people my age who are just getting married and having kids, and they want to get a policy on them, or a whole life policy on their toddler to have as they age, but I also see clients that are older, that are maybe looking for a final expense policy. I get to see clients at many different seasons of their lives.
I love to wake up in the morning and help people, and that's what we do. We don't just sell insurance, we help people.
The community has been very good to us, and Darren and I try our best to give back to the community.
We try our best to give back, because we have been very blessed. The people of Lawrence County and the city of Dublin have received us well, and we're very grateful for that.
I just love Dublin. This has always been home for me. My dad and my granddad do what they love, and it's a blessing to join them in it.
We live here, we worship here, and we see our clients at the grocery store, at church, or in the, in the community, or downtown. We're here, we're local, and we service what we sell all year long. We'll continue to do that without charge, and just a big thank you to be able to live and work in this community.